All right, good afternoon. I'd now like to bring the regular afternoon meeting of the Township of Langley Council to order, and the first item would be adoption and receipt of the agenda items. Moved by Counsel Ferguson, seconded by Counsel Arnison. I'll ask the question, all those in favor, opposed and carried, thank you. Next item is adoption of the minutes, the regular afternoon meeting of October the 21st, 2019. Have a motion, please. Counsel Kuntz, seconded, Counsel Arnison, any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, and that carries unanimously. And I need a motion to resolve the special closed for the items on the agenda and on table. Moved by Counsel Kuntz, seconded by...
Oh, sorry, I have an agenda item.
Yeah, yeah, I need a seconded. Seconded, Counsel Arnison.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, do I push your button?
No.
And I'll just...
It's been too long since...
I know. Counsel Richter?
Add a legal item?
Legal, okay, and...
Legal for me.
Counsel Arnison, legal, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and with that, I'll call the question, all those in favor, opposed and carried, thank you.
So we're left with the situation of can we confirm to the Agricultural Land Commission that this complies with our minimum parcel size, and that's effectively what the resolution is saying. We're not purporting to revisit the actual decision about agricultural merits and uses, that's for the commission. We're simply reciting what a previous council has determined by way of providing the zoning for the minimum parcel size that they're requesting.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Long.
Well, thanks, and just following up on that, your worship, when exactly was that rural plan put in that allows for these five acres?
Approximately 1979 by recollection, and was revisited in the 80s, but we haven't tackled it since then.
Yeah, and I think that's important, because you said previous council, I thought maybe it was recent, but that is a long, long time ago. So, we have no, you know, that's why I seconded it, because it does actually comply whether it should or shouldn't, or whether it should be farmed or not. I guess we're going to default to the expertise on the ALC for that.
And to clarify, your worship, the ALC has previously agreed to certain areas where they agree with our rural plan and the subdivisions. This is one of the areas where they do not.
Thank you. Counsel Ferguson.
I just wanted to double check, was that you said they usually do not agree in this particular site?
There was specific regions on the map in front of you, the dark green represents our, effectively, our rural plan and zoning densities that are in place. There's areas where they do not, and I'm going by recollection, but one of those areas is between, say, 216th and 232nd Street, that corridor. They have traditionally, well, they have not agreed in writing, and as a consequence, applications in that area generally are not successful, but each application must be viewed on its own merits.
Yeah, and I understand, thank you, this clarification, because that was what I remember the case as well, there's some other areas, and also, some of the areas that do comply, they are reluctant to approve as well, especially with the changes with the land commission. I will support it, but, you know, I think it'd be difficult anyway, but I will support it because it fits our rural plan. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question on F2. Oh. Okay, well, I'm going to recall the vote, so I'm calling the question on F2 again, ignore the first one. It carries with Counsel Richter, Counsel Arnison, Counsel Davis opposed. Move on to F3, this is for receipt, this is intersection of 28th Avenue and 272th Report. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Kuntz, Counsel Whitmarsh seconds, discussion. Counsel Ferguson?
Oh, yeah, is there any chance we can refer this, this is the 28th and 272nd, to the budget, if I may, in that way we can discuss it in more detail.
Okay, so, just to get clear, there are some options, and do you want to just refer the report for more discussion of the budget, or do you have a specific option that you want to refer?
Well, the actually specific report, and the actual money part and everything regarding the 28th and 272nd, Lee.
Okay, Mr. Backen, that's sufficient. Okay, thank you. Counsel Long? Okay, so now I'm going to open the debate on referral, and so if anybody wishes to speak to that, seeing none, I'm going to call the question. Oh, okay, you want...
So, yeah, your worship, I agree entirely that we could refer it, and I think if you want more specifics, in my mind, we're referring the notion of making it a full-operated pedestrian crossing. There were some other options that were brought in there that I don't think we should be considering, but, I mean, that could come up in the discussion, I suppose. But somehow or other, this has been a complex issue for some reason, over the summer and over the different emails and correspondence have come and gone and different suggestions, and I appreciate staff trying to make different suggestions, but the initial concern was when you pushed the button, the light should go red and you should be able to cross the street safely.
Okay, thank you. Call the question on the deferral. F3. That carries unanimously. Moving to F4, and this is private driveways policy update, and this is that council approved amendments, could I have a motion, please? Have a motion. Counsel Long moves it, Counsel Whitmarsh seconds it. Okay, I've got to clear the queue and start over again, there we go. Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, I had a couple amendments missed, this, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you want to hear from other speakers first.
No, you're the only one.
Just go ahead, I'm the only one. I wanted to recommend or at least discuss a couple of proposed amendments. I don't see the need for changes requested by council embedded in the policy, so I'd like to make an amendment to remove that line, and also make an amendment to update 3.16.3, such that on-street parking is not significantly impacted to allow some leeway. I'd like to make those two amendments, please.
I just want to bring it up so I can see. So it's moved and seconded, and I'm going to open up the amendment. Just let me, give me a minute to get my report up.
It's on page 5 of 5.
Okay.
Put my mic back on.
Yeah, just give me a second.
No, I mean, I need to turn my mic off, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, that's okay, just give me a minute here, we'll get going, I just want to find...
Or does he get all confused?
Yeah. Private driveways. Okay, so you're on which page?
Page 5 of 5.
Page 5 of 5.
3.16, I'd like to remove the line saying change is requested by council. I don't see the need for that.
Okay, change is requested by council. Okay, well, just that word, I don't think, yeah.
I don't need that line in there, a policy is a policy.
Yeah, that's right, it's just, so, we'll go one at a time here. Mr. Backen, I believe that wouldn't, that wouldn't be in there anyway, would it? Change, is that just for our note, is it in italics?
I believe that was just included as a note for council.
As a note, so...
The final policy would not have that in it.
Yeah, so that won't be in there, so I don't think we need that one, and what was the second one?
3.16.13, to add the word significantly impacted.
3.16...
1.3.
1.3.
On-street parking is not significantly impacted.
Adding the word significantly.
To add some leeway, as opposed to, if someone wants to widen their driveway, and, you know, maybe they are having a small impact, they're just denied. Then we're back with this again. I would like to just add the word significantly to allow some leeway, please.
Okay, so that's the amendment, is adding the word significantly, okay. Counsel Richter on the amendment.
Yeah, so, I wonder if Counselor Woodward could define what is intended by significantly?
Intended that it has to be something other than zero impact, so that it, you know, it could have, say, minimal impact, or some other word is fine, if we want to make it a friendly, work on this together and make some amendment, but this idea that if you're widening your driveway by a meter and potentially are impacting some on-street parking on your side of the street in a minor way, that you're not automatically denied, and then we're back here dealing with this again, just to allow some interpretation of the request as opposed to having to demonstrate zero impact.
Okay, so significantly, not significantly, would be not losing more than one parking spot?
I thought rather than try to get into a back and forth on the degree and a sliding scale to leave some interpretation based on the frontage of the house, the specifics of the situation, but not put it on the residence to demonstrate zero impact, which is technically what it says.
And then, I did have a question about significant trees, so that means that trees will not be removed from the road allowance in order to widen laneways?
It wouldn't be impacted, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so, Counsel Long.
Do we have two of these separate, can we separate them?
No, there's only one, only one, just on-street parking, 3.16.3.
Well, I'd like to move separate, I mean, the top one doesn't count then, in other words.
It doesn't count, there's only one amendment on, it's just adding the word significantly.
Because the request by council thing isn't supposed to be there, okay?
That's right, that's not on.
Well, I guess I have the floor, yeah, I'm concerned about that, because I think even if they lose one parking spot, that's not really where we're trying to go. My understanding was that it's really no impact, you move the driveway, in fact, you're helping out the landowners, you're doing something in a better way than people are doing it now on their own, but if we put the word significant in every single widening could lose a parking spot potentially, or, and I don't know if we agree with that, thank you.
Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, I was just going to respond to that, my last opportunity to speak here. If you don't put that in there, then you essentially are saying that if you're impacting on-street parking, and you want to widen your driveway, and you're on the side of the street that has some on-street parking, you won't be allowed to widen. It's essentially what it says, and I want to allow some leeway for people that have on-street parking on their side to potentially widen their private property with some minimal impact or not significant impact, whatever word you want to choose, Counsel Long, but right now, it's the way it's, you cannot, you have to demonstrate that it is not impacted, which you wouldn't be able to do. So the policy then would essentially be saying that if you have on-street parking on your side of the street, you're not allowed to widen the driveway, and that's not the intent of the policy. The particular resident that came to me that started all this, of course, doesn't have on-street parking on her side, so she would not be affected, but a lot of other residents are widening, and they have on-street on their side, and the way this is worded, none of them with on-street parking would be allowed to widen, as I read it today. Maybe Mr. Backen can help with some assistance, if there's some middle ground here between Counsel Long's position and mine.
That is a possible interpretation, your worship, because if there was any impact based on the wording, that could be taken literally, I don't think that was the intention, so the amendment to actually simply say it has to be significant, which probably means there could be loss of a portion of a stall, but not necessarily, the entire stall, or perhaps an entire stall, depending on the circumstances, would have to be weighed with the rest of the parking, the rest of the street parking that's in place, so it does allow a bit of a review to be done in context as opposed to being in the absolute.
Then that's my take, Mr. Backen, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Ferguson?
Well, I just wanted to, I think there'll be, there must be a process anyway, I mean, somebody's going to, either in planning or at subdivision stage or at application stage, somebody's going to be reviewing it anyway, if I may, through the chair. Two staff.
Your worship, the policy as drafted without the amendment that Counsel Woodward has put forward does in fact do exactly what Counsel Woodward is stating it would, which is only deal with situations when there is parking on the one side of the street where the widening is being requested, sorry, on the opposite side of the street where the widening is being requested. In other words, it would technically not allow any widening of driveways on the side where there is parking, keeping in mind that the bylaw has changed in recent years, and we do allow parking on both sides of the streets in most new areas in Latimer, but this wouldn't address the, sort of, the more historic established areas such as Routley, where parking is allowed on one side. So if the intent of council is to actually allow loss of some parking, and if council believes that that is to be acceptable, then the word addition or the amendment is, I think, is in the right direction. If council's intent is to not allow any loss of parking and only allow the widening to occur only on the side where there's no, there's no parking, then the amendment should not be incorporated.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I appreciate the amendment that Counsel Woodward is bringing forward, I think it makes sense. I probably would prefer the word minimal, saying that it has only minimal impact, but regardless of whether it's minimal or not significant, I will be supporting the amendment.
Thank you. I am concerned with it, I think parking is at a premium, and by then saying, well, we can do a little bit less parking, I don't think we should impact parking at all, it's a premium up there, so I won't be supporting it. Okay, I'm going to call the question. Please, F4. Okay, and it carries with Counsel Arnison, Counsel Long, Mayor Frose opposed. And so we're now on the main motion as amended, any further discussion? Counsel Arnison on the main motion as amended.
Thank you, worship. Maybe I can seek through you, your worship, some instruction from Mr. Backen or Mr. Seifi. I had a couple of things that could be added to this, but I don't know how to attach them as per the policy, because they're not really related to changing any of the wording of it, but it's more to a costing program for licensing to do cost recovery on these applications. So I'm just wondering how I could, how I can move that kind of initiative forward.
Your worship, I think to clarify, I think what I'm hearing is that we're adding another process that may have some incidental costs associated with it, so how do we best recover those? Our traditional practice has been that when we add a new process, we actually take the first year to try to get a handle on what that cost is going to look like, and then once we know what those costs are, we introduce it as part of our fees and charges by law, and we do so because under the general law of fees and charges, you're supposed to be insuring your cost recovery. We could do some preliminary estimates, but our traditional path has been to follow, so what you're seeking may happen, will likely happen in due course, but if you seek to accelerate it and provide an estimate, I guess our advice would be to make an amendment to the policy that we request a fee of X, $50 or something, at the onset to actually cover our costs.
Not having a dollar figure in mind, I'm wondering if that language could be broader just to capture the idea of cost recovery?
Perhaps concurrently with this, or maybe as a separate motion actually, would be better to deal with this than just have, ask staff to review cost recovery of this initiative as part of a future budget.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay, thank you, we'll do that separately, thanks. Counsel Long?
Yeah, I'm extremely concerned now, because this whole motion has changed shape and size and impact, because the initial discussion that we had at several meetings ago, which I didn't necessarily agree with at the time, but gave it some thought, seemed to put forward the case that there was no impact to parking, it was just kind of a goofy rule that we've got, and if it doesn't affect parking, it doesn't affect the neighborhood, you know, why not allow people to widen their driveway? So I've kind of conceded to that, and now, at the end of the day, that's been changed, saying, well, we're going to lose a couple of parking spots every time one of these are done, or one potentially, or a significant one. So I'm afraid the vote's already been taken, I should have spoken even more passionately about not making that change, but I would ask that maybe it be a division. Right, if you can divide the motion so I can not vote for the new amended 3.16.3.
But I don't know, we have already voted on, I don't know if we can divide it, because that's integral.
No, it's in there, but you're going to have to vote...
I'll get some advice from the clerk, if that's integral to the motion or not, you know, one can't stand without the other, I'm not sure. I'm asking Madam Clerk.
I would be, I believe that is part of the motion, so there's nothing to divide off of it.
That's my...
Worship, it would be effectively undoing the amendment that's already been passed, it would be reconsideration of the amendment.
Yeah, so I think if there's an issue with the motion, then to vote against it, but I don't think we can separate that out.
Yeah, well, it's very unfortunate, because I'd like to support the concept, but I can't support the amendment, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, just try to address some of those comments, I think the amendment there, Mr. Counsel Long, was to allow some leeway for staff to make a judgment based on the situation that comes forward, and especially as we are creating new streets that have parkings on both sides, we, you know, essentially are saying that you're not allowed to widen it under any circumstances if parking happens to be on your side of the street, whereas this new amended version allows some flexibility, rather than simply addressing the issue that next time someone tries to widen their driveway where they have parking on the side of the street. So this idea that somehow we're going to be losing multiple parking stalls when we add a meter or a meter and a half to a driveway also doesn't make sense, it would be based on the distance between the other driveway and what kind of vehicles could or could not fit in there based upon that, so this assumption, these statements being made that all of a sudden we're losing stalls for every widening are not factually correct, and I would ask nobody to base their vote on those, thanks.
All right, seeing no further discussion?
I think I said potential.
Yeah, okay, so I'm...
I didn't, I see that.
Okay, I'm going to call, I'm going to call the question, I think, I think we have had a pretty good discussion on this one. And it carries, Counsel Arnison, Counsel Long opposed. And we want, okay, and Counsel Arnison wanted to do a follow-up motion, Counsel Richter, you just pushed your button, we're not on motion, okay. Sorry, I'm just, okay, I'm going to, okay, Counsel Arnison, I know you had a follow-up motion you wanted to make.
Yes, thank you, worship. Just that, the motion is that staff review a cost recovery strategy and mechanism to help to defray costs associated with the new policy.
To refer to the budget process, what was the exact wording you had?
And refer to the budget process?
Yeah.
For 2020, okay.
Is there a seconded to that? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, discussion, Counsel Woodward?
Just want to ask some questions to clarify, so, Mr. Backen, when you currently make an application to widen your driveway, you fill out a permit and an application specific to that process, and you pay a fee in order to have that permit considered and reviewed and issued, do you not?
That's correct.
So are we not already doing what the motion is requesting?
Effectively, I think what the intention of the motion is, and I'll defer to the mover, is that there may be some additional incidental costs that would actually be put into place, such as measuring a strip of road to see how many, how many stalls would fit or how many cars would fit, and I think what the thought process was, that while we'd ordinarily do that and we would pick it up for the next budget year, it's actually asking us to accelerate our thought process as to the additional charges we may incur and to consider that for the budget process, so I...
So, it's also one of the questions, so in considering the cost increase of maybe a quick site visit or some other additional review based upon this policy amendment, are we expecting a wave of driveway widening applications which are going to, you know, drive up the cost significantly, or would in fact potentially reviewing the fee structure cost more than the additional revenue from driveway widenings?
Our traditional process would be to try it for a year to get those numbers in place. It's difficult to determine what number will be affected by it. I think what this is asking for, and again, I stand to be corrected by the mover, is simply to see if there's a need to genuinely pre-estimate the additional cost and try to recover those at the onset. I don't think it's going to be significant, but I think you're correct in saying that ordinarily that process would wait till after we've actually had real data, not projected data.
All right, thank you.
Counsel Arnison?
Thank you, worship. I do appreciate the clarification through Counsel Woodward and also Mr. Backen. I'm just speaking from personal experience in a different jurisdiction that had more or less of a permitting fee that was associated with that. I would just point to the fact that there are a number of circumstances that need to be reviewed now by staff, street trees, whether or not it's going to impinge on parking spots and by how much. I think the other complication that I ran into was we may have a speed bump that will impact whether people can park or not, there are many different possibilities here, and I just don't want something to be able to go forward that doesn't include any cost recovery, because it may not be a tsunami of people that are applying, but I certainly think that it will add to our staff's workload, and I think it should be accounted for in that way.
Thank you. So I'll label this F4, is that correct? Okay, so I'll call the question on this motion, F4. And the motion fails. Counsel Whitmarsh, Counsel Kuntz, Mayor Frose, Counsel Woodward, Counsel Long opposed. And so now we move on to correspondence. H1, seniors advisory committee, council priorities committee, and agriculture advisory economic enhancement committee, could we have a motion to adopt those minutes? Counsel Davis, seconded by Counsel Arnison, discussion on that, on H1, seeing none, I'll call Counsel Richter.
This is just on receipt, so I'm okay with receipt, I did want to go and talk about them.
Okay, so I'm going to clear the queue right now as we get this done, and I'll call the question on H1. Yeah, so just adopting the minutes. Carries unanimously.
If there's going to be discussion on the recommendations of the priority committee, I need to leave, so maybe we could leave that until the end, if that's possible, discuss the advisories and all those other chaps, but I was, don't forget, I wasn't at the meeting talking about the grants.
Okay.
Which is in the next, the next...
The next motion is, H2 is coming up, so...
Yeah, but if you want to discuss the minutes.
Okay. All right, so you'll be on, so Counsel Ferguson, I know on H3 you'll have a concern, and you have a concern on H2.
Right, so this discussion now on H1 should not include either of those, if possible.
Yeah, so H, so we're just talking about...
That only leaves the agricultural and the economic, right? Seniors advisory.
So I think H2, okay, let's get some clarity here, H2 looks to me that it's just that council directs staff to add community associations to community grant processes as a separate category, and that staff report back on what criteria will be for community associations. That is, you're in conflict with?
I am, for H3.
Yeah, we're talking H2 right now, so...
I thought we were on H1.
That's what I thought, on H1, your worship.
We did. Okay, you can talk about, if you have a question regarding the minutes, go right ahead, but we just adopted the minutes, we haven't...
I know, we've adopted the minutes, I just was a little concerned that for the seniors' advisory committee, there's only three members of the public who are present, were present at that meeting, and I don't know, of course, we're going through the appointment process, and we will be adding new people, I would guess, to the committees going forward, but I'm wondering if we need to consider changing the name of the seniors advisory committee in order to attract more interest in serving on it. Now, I know under our age-friendly status, we have to have a seniors advisory committee, so I'm wondering about renaming the seniors advisory committee to seniors and social planning advisory committee, and I'm wondering if council could refer a discussion around renaming the committee to the committee to get their input on it.
Okay, I think that might be very appropriate, to have them come up with their new name. We could do that in other business, if you just want to make a motion to, it doesn't have anything to do with the minutes, how about other business make a motion to refer it, and we'll take it, we'll take care of it then, that's coming up pretty quick, so. Okay, so anything else on the, on the minutes? Counsel Arnison, did you have something on the minutes?
No.
Okay, so I'll clear the queue there. All right, so we're done with H1, so now we go to H2, okay, and Counsel Long?
Yeah, I removed myself, but I'd like to come back to the next one, so don't forget.
We won't forget you. Okay, I will now ask for a motion on H2. Counsel Whitmarsh, seconded, Counsel Davis, any discussion on H2? Seeing none, I'll call the question on H2. Sorry.
Oh, sorry, I thought I did.
There you go. And it carries, Counsel Woodward, Counsel Ferguson opposed. Move on to H3, we'll bring Counsel Long back in, and then we'll kick Counsel Ferguson out. Present. All right, H3 is next item, council priorities committee recommended motion, could I have a motion, please? Counsel Long, seconded, have a seconded, seconded, Counsel Kuntz, Counsel Long, discussion?
Yeah, so we have criteria already, I believe, for community halls and meeting places, let me just get to it here, but there was some issue, I think, when they came for a grant last year, that they minded to be outside that criteria, so I just wanted to reiterate, I think, and it does say that be eligible to receive the community hall grant, but it is going to include meeting the current criteria.
That's correct, is that correct, Mr. Backen?
So that means, and there's certain things that...
Correct, except as to location.
As to location, that's the only thing.
Yeah, I understand the location, of course, that's for sure, but I mean, as far as a capital grant goes, there's certain criteria of things that improve the facility for the use of the public, doesn't it necessarily include some things that don't? Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call the question on H3. It carries unanimously, can I ask Counsel Ferguson back in? I think he went that way. Mr. Seifi or Mr. Winsley? Next item is associations of the government agencies. These are the minutes from the CP Community Advisor Panel, receipt, could I have a motion, please? Counsel Davis, second, have a second, Counsel Ferguson, Counsel Long on the minutes.
Yes, thank you. I was interested in item D3 that was attached to the minutes or the agenda of that meeting, and it talked about an update on the advanced rail warning system. I was wondering if anyone can give counsel and us an update on... It is an odd thing that that's been there so long, and they've got garbage bags over top of it and blankets, and they get blown off. And so, when is that thing going to... There was an update, I believe, given at that meeting, worship, on October 3rd, although that's a long time ago now. But is there something that we can be told as to when it might be acted?
I'll ask Mr. Seffy. Do you have any information on the advanced warning system that, if not, Counsel Davis has some comments?
Only that the province keeps telling us that it's going to be completed soon, your worship, that this was supposed to be completed a while ago. We can check again with them.
Okay, thanks. Counsel Davis, if you want to push your button, I'll push on. Oh, there's, yep. Okay.
Counsel Patrino, also, if I recall, it was a, what do you call it, techie? What do you...
Yes, a technical.
A technical issue through the province, and they're trying to get the technical thing figured out.
Was it worked on the supplier's computer system, or didn't work on their computer system when it went into... Is that something like that? Yeah. Yeah, okay, I'm going to call, seeing no for discussion, I'll call a question on I1. It carries unanimously, and Counsel Richter, your motion for the renaming, if you want to make a motion to refer to the seniors committee?
Yeah, and I have some other things, too, but I'll make the motion that we refer the possible renaming of the seniors advisory committee to the seniors and social planning advisory committee, to the committee for their input and suggested alternate names.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Counsel Davis, seconds, discussion on... Counsel Arneson?
Thank you, worship. I just asked the mover, just because we're almost at the end of our work plan, so I'm hoping that we have a speaker at our next meeting. I'm not necessarily sure that this would be a great sort of opportunity or segue to bring up the renaming, rather than looking maybe to the new committee members, so just the timeline, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Counsel Long?
Yeah, I think we could initiate the discussion, but I'm not sure as I agree with the suggested name, and that was a good one, but there are probably other names, too, maybe the age-friendly committee or something else. So, as long as it's left open, I would believe that would be...
Yeah, the motion leaves it open, so, yeah. Counsel Davis?
Other than the intent of the motion was to get more people, or get more people to come out, so if we, to apply for it, so I guess it doesn't, I guess it really doesn't matter, but, yeah.
Do you have coffee, tea, and cookies?
Yeah, okay. Where I was going was, the intent of the motion was so that we could get more people to apply, because anybody that's not a senior figures that maybe can't apply for it, so that's what I would be wondering if it's a, if you put it on into January, you might not have the people, if you put it on, if we advertise it as a different committee, then it might get more people applying.
Okay, and then, I think that information will go back to the committee, and...
I'm sorry. The cutoff's already been set.
Yeah, so then, yeah, so, Counsel Ferguson?
I think everything's in the works right now, it's difficult to change, but we did discuss it briefly at our last meeting, and whether it comes out as this particular name or something else, but we have discussed it, and yes, we are always looking for members of all ages and orders of distinction. Thank you.
Thanks. Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, I just want to, I mean, just remind me, I think I want to be careful, too, in some of my comments in regards to what's public, but I think it sounds like here we are again a year later, trying to find a mission for a committee, rather than a committee, rather than something we want to achieve and then forming a committee to do that. Here we are, we have a committee that I thought I recall some desire to see it find its mission over the past year, and here we are again discussing renaming it to try to give it some purpose. If it doesn't have a purpose, then maybe it's wrapped up its mission, it's done some good work, and there's no need to carry on with a committee for the sake of carrying on with a committee. Thank you.
Fair enough, but this is, the committee will, it's a name change, that's all it says.
Why give them a name change if they're just going to carry on doing, you know, the three people?
So, the process would be that the committee would come back to counsel with a suggested name change, and then counsel can discuss that at that time, and if there's other issues, they can be discussed at other times in other meetings. Counsel Richter?
Yeah, there's no suggestion on my part that this committee has finished its work and needs to be terminated. I just want to make that perfectly clear. I believe the committee does have an ongoing mandate, and, but what I'm trying to do is to attract or figure out a way to help bring a more robust interest in being on the committee, to the committee.
Thank you.
They do do important things.
Yeah, and we are age-friendly committee, and that work came out of the seniors committee. Counsel Arneson?
Thank you, worship. Just by way of clarification, I would like to ensure that counsel recognizes that, I call it the little committee that could. We may be small in numbers, but we are growing. I have checked with the clerk, and I believe we have three new applications done to the committee, as well as now somebody from the Fraser Health Authority and somebody from the ALSCAT who would like to be as part of the committee. We do have a work plan that's in play, a dementia-friendly community, as well as review of our age-friendly review. So, I think to consider the demise of this committee is very premature, and I understand that we do want to have efficient and effective communities, but I think that referrals to the fact that, you know, maybe we should be doing something else with our time, that's what I read into this, is not particularly helpful, because this committee, I think, has done a great job under challenging circumstances, and I think that once this new committee comes together, I think that there will be a strong advocacy group for a lot of the things that we need to do in our community, and not to mention the fact that it is administratively supported by our social planners. So, there is a lot going on there, so I hope that we don't get this sense that we're languishing somehow, because I think it's certainly far from the case.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call the question on that motion, J1. And it carries Counsel Woodward opposed, and Counsel Richter, let me get your mic back on. Did you have another?
Yes, I have a number of items coming out of items distributed. The first one is, on today's items distributed, item number seven, there's an email to mayor and council with regards to the vacant homes in the township of Langley, and a request from Ms. Erin Watkins that we reevaluate the minimum standards for vacant homes. Owners should be required to keep all structures on their property secure at all times. Trees should not be allowed to grow over to unsafe standards. Garbage should not be allowed to sit at the front of the property for two months with no attention. An owner should be required to visit their vacant properties regularly to ensure no one is squatting and structures remain secure. So, I would like to refer her letter to staff for a report, if I could.
Okay.
Do I need to make a motion to that effect?
Mr. Backen, do you need a motion or a direction?
I have the direction, your worship, we picked up on that as well.
Thank you, okay.
The other item is, today, Global News released a report on lead contamination levels in water, municipal water across the country. So, I'm wondering if staff, I know staff monitor our water very closely here, and I'm wondering if we could get an update from them on the lead levels in our water system and the different reservoirs.
Thanks, Ms. Backen, yep, you take that. I know there's some work on some other water issues. And the next one, Counsel Richter?
I don't know which button.
You're on, but Counsel Richter?
I need to speak to that, because that's not, that's not very...
Okay, well, it's this direction at this point, why don't we let Counsel Richter finish, and then I'll let, then you're next.
Can I just comment on that particular one?
No, we're going to let her finish then, because it's this direction. Move through the list.
It may not be applicable out here because our infrastructure isn't that old. I can see how it could be an issue.
Okay, we'll, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. But I would like a report to reassure, because our residents are quite concerned about this, particularly the residents in Murrayville. With regards to backyard burning, I'm wondering if we could put a notice on the township page that backyard burning is now complete, and they should not, the window has closed. Over the last couple of days, there's been a number of backyard burning continuing to happen in the area that I live in, and I note in the report here, item number 13, on page 32, there was a report from the fire chief with regards to fireworks, and that fireworks could be called into the non-emergency number at 604-534-3496. My question is, is this also the number where outside burning can be called in?
That's correct, your worship.
Okay, so could we put that on the township page, that burning season is done? If you, if anyone is burning, please call the non-emergency number? Okay. Murrayville sidewalks, this has been an issue in the last little while, because apparently a new sidewalk going in at 221st Street and 48th Avenue across from the library appears to be too narrow for people to get comfortably by each other when they've got strollers or scooters or whatever. So, I'm wondering if staff can check the width on that sidewalk out to make sure it is meeting the 1.5-meter standard, and if it's not, to bring it into compliance with that standard?
Okay, so I think staff can take a look at it, but that would require...
Okay. Also, from October 31st, item number 10, on page 24, with regards to the ongoing road works that are, that's keeping 56th Avenue closed between 240th and 248th Street. The flaggers have been removed from the corner of Robertson Crescent and 248th Street, and there is a lot of concern in that particular neighborhood with increased risks to road safety, and I believe there was an accident, a fairly significant accident yesterday. So, I'm wanting to refer this to staff for some sort of indication about what we can do to bring the road safety standards back. The flaggers have been removed, I understand it's a WorkSafe BC investigation, but is there something we can do in the interim? Because it is definitely not a safe intersection, particularly in the morning rush and in the afternoon rush. Too many motorists are queuing on Robertson, trying to get out onto 248th and taking unnecessary risks in getting out onto 248th, or even getting across 248th.
Again, thank you, Mr. Backen. You got all those? Okay.
All right, and item number 15 on page 34, I'm sorry, there's just been so many of them this past week. In Calgary, they opened a tiny home village for veterans, and I think this is a great idea, and I'm wondering if they're looking for a potential location in BC. So, I'm wondering if we could ask our staff to get in touch with them to see if there's someplace that would be an appropriate location that we could help them out with, to get that kind of a facility here for our local vets.
Okay, Mr. Backen, wrap it up?
Yeah, okay. No, I'm not wrapped up.
Oh, sorry.
Number 18 on page 72, is a concern with regards to 240th Street and 56th Avenue, hazards being placed in the right-of-way. It still has not been cleared up. I know I've raised this at a previous meeting, I'm wondering if staff could follow up on that one as well.
Yeah, I think it's been forwarded to engineering, or is that correct?
Yeah. And then on item number 20 on page 75, Mrs. Linda Nash had queried why on 216th Street, the speed limit by the two schools there is 50 kilometers an hour, yet in the North Otter area beside North Otter School or in front of North Otter School, it's 30 kilometers, and wondering if we could make a consistent school safety zone. My question here is, is this something that should be referred to the task force between township and the school district?
Well, I think this is really a municipal issue. So, Mr. Seffy, do you have any, you know, there are different types of, you know, criteria. I know that with the school on 216th, the way they're fenced and everything, it has an impact, but I don't have, I'm not an expert on that.
But it would seem to me, I think it should be, 30 is a safer speed in front of a school, and maybe we should make sure all the schools have that speed limit in front of them?
Well, there are some issues there, but Mr. Seffy can maybe elaborate a little better. Certainly, I understand your intent.
Thank you, worship. You are correct in that there are different circumstances, different measures in place, different factors at play that govern whether a 30K speed limit sign is needed or not, is warranted or not, and I believe the communication that Counsel Richter referenced has been responded to by staff and provided the information that is mostly historic in terms of how one particular school has, I guess, experienced a different process and different assessment and different criteria based on historic direction and historic discussions with residents.
Yeah, but it's the inconsistency that I'm thinking needs to be addressed, that if we're doing 30K, and there's no question in my mind, there's numerous studies that show the slower a car is going, the less of a chance of a fatality or a major industry, injury. So, if we're doing 30K for one school, I think we should be doing 30K for all schools. So, can we refer that back to staff for additional review?
Well, I believe we've already had the review. There are, there's the TAC requirements out there, but Mr. Backen, how could we resolve this? Because it would still have to come up to, if we're going to change, this is a national standard, so I don't know how we're going to change that.
Worship, I interpreted it to be a clarification as to whether the standard applies to these areas.
Could we have that clarification? That would be great, thanks.
Okay, item number 22 on page 79, the township rain garden issues at 8505-204th Street, and I'm assuming we're going to get a report from staff, or could we get an update on that? It sounds to me like it's similar to the other neighborhood issues that we've had recently with regards to the innovative aquifer recharge, things that we're putting in place in new developments, and people being concerned about how these are going to be maintained.
Mr. Seffy, do you have some updates on that? I was referring to you.
Your worship, staff is currently in the process of responding to the resident. I'm not sure if the response is going to be, I guess, accepted or adequate, because the fact of the matter is that, in staff's opinion, this is a good thing overall for the community, for the environment. Yes, we understand that there is additional burden on those fronting in terms of the maintenance requirements, and we have taken steps in the past few years to try and mitigate and minimize the maintenance requirements by planting, I guess, low-tolerant or high-tolerant or low-maintenance-required vegetation with vegetation that doesn't require a lot of maintenance, but we believe that the rain gardens, as they're called, are an integral and important component of sustainable development that provide for aesthetics, environmental, wildlife habitat, stormwater management, all those types of issues.
Yeah, and certainly I think that they are good additions to the neighborhood, but I guess my concern is, should the maintenance of them be being offloaded to the residents? I know it's a cost issue, but I think that's the major question that the residents are coming back to us with, which is, if you're going to put this in, you guys should be maintaining it, it shouldn't be us. So, I hope we'll have a discussion around that.
Thanks, got a follow-up question on that. Isn't it part of when they purchase that home that they're aware that that is, there's an, is that very common? We all have the responsibility of our frontage, whether it's shoveling the walks or cutting the grass, is that pretty much throughout the township?
That's correct, your worship. The requirements are typically laid out in a covenant that is registered on title, and as you have pointed out, it's similar to the responsibility for shoveling snow... as you have pointed out, it's similar to the responsibility for shoveling snow, or clearing the, the sidewalk, fronting your property of ice, et cetera.
Thanks.
So they've purchased their house, knowing that there is that covenant in place?
Because that's part of our, it's a more environmentally sustainable way of dealing with, with stormwater, is to have it infiltrate, rather than pushing it into the streams.
Okay, and my last item then is item number 24, on page 87, with regards to a Yorxen Park pole replacement at 82nd and 207th, and this letter came in from Wendy McMillan, she's quite concerned about the long wait for a light repair on such a dark street, and wondering when we can, they can reasonably expect to see that pole replaced.
Backen, do you have any information on that?
Yes, Your Worship, there has been some investigation as to what may have caused that. We believe that there may have been some damage that may have occurred, so we will, we will follow up on that, and, and if there was a damage done by a third party, a contractor or anybody else, we'll, we'll make sure that the costs are recovered, and if not, we'll, we'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you.
That's my list for today, thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel Long?
Well, Counsel Richter missed one. It's item eight on vaping. So I believe there's a staff report on item eight, and I'd like to move.
Page 16 on October 31st.
Thank you. So there's a suggestion of a general policy that Richmond has adopted, and I think we should adopt the same thing. The policy reads as a general policy, the township of Langley opposes the placement of vaping product advertising on sites and property that the township owns or has sufficient control over, including transit shelters, transit benches, benches, and other street furniture. And the staff also advised the Patterson Group and, of our policy, even though it would be a voluntary for them, I understand in the report that it may, you know, there's no contractual reason that they have to change it, but we could advise them on a voluntary basis, but that it should be included in any new contracts. So how would you like to handle that, Your Worship?
So it could be handled as a motion tonight. It's, I don't know if we need it as a notice motion, it's, but that's up to, up to council. It's fairly benign, we can't, we certainly can advise, we're opposed to it, we can't enforce it, but I, I think we can handle this as a motion tonight, if you want to move that motion similar to the one on page 20 of.
Can I move it now? No?
We've got time.
We've got time?
Yeah.
There's no time like the present, because tonight, you never know. So I'll move it.
Okay, moved, and seconded by Counsel Ferguson. So discussion on, on that one? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. So the motion would read very similar to page 20, the city, Richmond's motion, although we're just swapping out city for township of Langley, is that correct? Okay.
Policy, and that we would be advising them, as the report mentions, to do, to adhere on a voluntary basis, but also that any new contracts would be, the policy would be included, obviously.
Okay, call the question. Kerry's unanimously. And Counsel Arneson? The one that Counsel Long missed?
Yet, yet another one. Yes, I'd like to refer item number five from Todd Stone, that came to our mayor, further to changes that are being suggested for our local government business taxes. I'd just like to review this, send it to staff for a review back, and information with respect to its implications for the township of Langley.
Okay, okay, and just a direction, is that, okay, thank you. Anything else, any other business? Motion to terminate?
Termination.
Counsel Davis, second, a secondor, Counsel Kunst, all those in favor, opposed, carried.